Meeting to order, please rise for the flag salute. Is this on? Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. This working tonight? The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspaper, the Tap into Online News, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district website. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Grandi?
Here.
Mrs. Keegan?
Here.
Mr. Pallack?
Here.
Mr. Marzullo?
Here.
Mrs. Dora?
Here. Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing tonight? Good? It's nice to have such a nice turnout tonight. We have a very busy packed schedule this evening, so we are gonna get ready, and tonight we're gonna start with some... Just make sure, give me one second. We're gonna start with some presentations. Right, when do the presentations before a public... Okay. So the first presentation this evening is our high school robotics club. So why don't you guys start? Looking forward to this one. Yeah, I'm gonna go over there so I can see. Okay, hi. Uh, is this on? Wait. For me. Wait, it's on, I think. Just a little, it's very...
Hi, welcome to Chili's. Hi, I'm Rin. I'm one of the captains of the Cedar Grove Robotics Team. We presented last year, but we're here again to just give a report on our progress. So unlike last year, we actually have two teams, because we have more interest in the robotics team overall, so we had the ability to make two robots and compete both teams. So Vex Robotics is a high school... Well, it's a program that goes from, all the way from elementary school to the university level. We're obviously participating in the high school level. So it consists of competitions and programs that are managed and managed by the Robotics Education and Competition Foundation. It's sponsored by a bunch of technology companies like Tesla and NASA. So every year, there's a new season that starts in late September and ends in mid-May, and in May, they release the new game. So the new game this year is going to be released, I think, next week. The game for this... Oh, okay. So during robotics team consists of lunch meetings and occasional after-school meetings. So during the lunch meetings, we talk about building the robot, we add new parts to it, and we discuss new ideas. This is the bulk of what we do in robotics team. We only have occasional after-school meetings when we need to make any last-minute changes before competition. This is a photo from one of the times we stayed after school to add pneumatics, and sometimes we order food. We keep a notebook. This year, we decided to do an online notebook, but typically you would do in a paper notebook, you're given this notebook, and then you have to write in it. It's really tedious, but it's really good to show your progress, and it's great for documentation, because you can go back and look at it. Here are two photos. On the left side, we have Robot A. This is when we just added the sprockets, and on the other side, you could see the finished end product of Team B's robot. They have a lot of stuff going on in that robot, but it's very cool. So the game itself is divided within two parts. The first part is an autonomous period. This is where we program code, and then we let it run. So this is pre-programmed, and it's a 15-second time interval to run the code. The second part, which is the part that most people get excited about, is the driver-controlled period, where we actually drive the robot. So we're given set things that we need to complete during the time periods, and it's very competitive and very intense when you're actually playing it. So this is the field. So there's two main colors. There's the red team, and then there is a blue team. Each team has two different robotics teams, so it's two alliances. So we would be picked with someone else during qualifications, but we'll go into that later. So what's really interesting about this game is that your high goal, say your team blue, your high goal's over here, but if, say you miss your disc, right, because you have to shoot them into the high goal, say you miss them, now you're scoring for the opposite team, and now they're getting the points. There's also these rollers that you can just roll. You can actually see it on that robot in the front. There's rollers, they actually roll these, and then the whole, mainly the rest of the mechanism is just for the high goals, but say you miss them, you are scoring for the opposite team. So that's pretty much the gist of the game. And Jack's gonna extend it.
Okay. So, these are just some basic rules. They put these rules in place to try and constrict what you can actually do with the robot. Like, you need the robot within a certain size, so we had to do a lot of work to make sure our robot actually fit within, I believe it was 13 by 13 inches, and 13 inches tall. You also can't have more than two discs in the robot at a time, so you have to build around making sure you don't have discs jammed up inside your robot. That meant putting guards on it. You can't expand outside of the set size during the match, so that meant no appendages on the robot that moved at all, otherwise we'd break that rule. We also could not have any parts of the robot, like the battery or the computer on it, fall off. If so, then you are disqualified from the match, so you had to make sure that was very sturdy. And you can't trap other robots. If you do so, a countdown starts, and then you have to release them after a set period of time, or you're disqualified from that game. So you have to make sure you're playing the game right, and it changes how you approach it. Those are the basic rules. I think that's it.
Oh, okay.
Not sure why that sound happened. Um, well, okay.
Do you want me to hear it?
Sure.
Okay, so now we're going to do our little demo. So Raj is going to shoot the disc. So, as I said before, we're shooting high goals. High goals are about this tall, so you have to really... I mean, we did guess and check, but some people actually calculated the trajectory. See, this would be much more epic if we had the goal, but you get the idea. Another challenge we had was the intake method, because you do have to get enough grip on the discs, because the discs are actually made out of foam, so it's very difficult to get it to go in and then on top of that to even shoot it. Do you wanna do another one? Oh yes, we also have string. At the end of the game, the last 10 seconds, you can actually shoot out string. It was originally supposed to be, you were supposed to extend like an arm or something, but most people just ended up doing string. You could actually get more points from the amount of tiles that you touch with the string, which is why our string is so long. You wanna add something?
Yes. During the match, something that would often happen to other teams is if you release your strings before the end of the game starts, then you are disqualified from that game. So it was a big deal to make sure you actually made your string mechanism work properly, otherwise it could cost you the game.
So, like I've said earlier, well, actually, like Rin said earlier, the regular season runs from late September to mid-May. Well, I like to say that the regular season starts and ends at about like February-ish. So we had two, three regular season games, actually. Two in Milburn and one in Sparta. This is from the Sparta game. Lots of cool stuff here. Oh, yes. So, three regular season competitions this year. Everyone serves a lot of roles. They help build the robots, they serve on the drive team, which is like setting up and disassembling. Wait, no, not disassembling, just setting up and providing support and strategies, and also driving the robot itself. So, team members, they essentially lead what's happening in their team. They're responsible for check-in, inspection, attending matches, attending matches on time. Teams must work in alliances with each other, randomly assigned, so we could, so Team A and B could be working together, Team A and B could be against each other, we could be not even playing together at all, and also, if you do not make it on time, you could be disqualified. We did go on to the state championships, and that was a big achievement for us, and yeah.
Okay, so during the competition, team members must assume various roles. So there's spotters, and they advise the driver during live matches. There's scouts who collaborate with alliance partners, and they also scout like upcoming matches to see your opponents and to plan strategies against them. And then there's also maintenance and repairs, which works on the robot like if it gets damaged during the game. After five qualifying rounds, only top teams are promoted to the eliminations. Our team actually, our teams actually made it to the eliminations all three, all three of our events, which is really rare. That's our team right there.
Okay, so our robot B made it to states this year. This is us at Bellworks in Homedale. Based on our performance in the three competitions that we went to this year before states, those judged whether we go to states or not, and at our second competition, we were cutting it close, and we might not have qualified, but we qualified in the end, and we got placed amongst the top 50 teams in New Jersey, and it's our second year in a row getting into states, into the state tournament. So some tournament highlights are our great teamwork during the tournaments from me, driver, our spotters, John Philo, and Mips, our scout John, and pit crew, which is basically all of us. And a major highlight from the state was us being in first place after three qualifying matches. We were the number-one ranked team in New Jersey after the qualifying matches, and put us in a good position for the alliance selection, where we choose our teams. And we advanced into the Elite Eight rounds, where we got eliminated, and we got, we got placed amongst the top teams in NJ, which was really good for us, and we are proud of what we done.
So Vex is a student-run organization with little adult help. Through our programs, you could learn skills like mechanical engineering, computer science, communication, public speaking, and teamwork. Leadership opportunities are in all of these domains, and you could help out anywhere. My role was team captain of Team B. I ensured all others are fulfilling their roles and kept the team together.
All right, so our hopes for the next year is, this year, though, like our teams had a very great season, and I'm very like proud of what everyone's been doing. We had lots of collaboration, effort, and innovation, and it was amazing. We had lots of meets during lunch mainly, and then we also had after-school meetings. Mainly, the day before we had a competition, we were staying up late to like work on the last eight weeks to make sure what was ready for the next competition.
The impact that had on our team was really great. You can tell how the robot went from the first, first week to the last week. It really improved a lot, and those, those times during lunch or after-school that we stayed, well, it's revision of course, Mr. Koster helped us a lot and helped us improve our robot. And it's very nice being on a team where a lot of people help you, a lot of people support you in teamwork. I went in Mr. Koster's class looking for a state during lunch, and I saw the robotics team working, and really inspires you to come and to help and show teamwork, and it's very nice to have people that support you like that.
All right, so for the next year, we just hope to achieve a third appearance in the state championship, which will be, which will be very, very nice. On our first year, Team A, we only had one team, and that was able to succeed into going into states. This year, only one of our teams went in, but that was still great and successful, so we hope to get another chance in the states again this year. And we also potentially wanna host our own robotics event in Cedar Grove High School over here, so like multiple schools would come here to like participate in such events we went to, in like Milburn and Sparta. So, final thing, I know because I've been holding guys for a bit, but this is the final slide. The Vex 23-24 game is gonna be revealed in May, too, and we're gonna see it. So far, we only know of the name, which is like over-under, I have no idea what that's supposed to mean, so we're gonna see that very soon, and that's gonna be it. So, oops, there we go. So just wanna thank you guys for your continued support.
Okay, specifically, we want to thank Mr. Bear, Mr. Gogarty, Mrs. Infante, all the parents that helped with transportation, food, our awesome sweatshirts that we recently got this year, and most importantly, the administration and the Board of Education for continuously supporting us. That's all. Oh wait, questions? Does anyone have any questions? Sorry. No? Okay.
Thank you very much for that presentation. You guys do an awesome job. I look forward to hearing about next year's. Another round of applause, please. Okay, so we're gonna move right into our next presentation. Mr. Gogarty? Oh, okay, Mr. Gogarty. Boy, Mr. Gogarty, you look different. Nope.
No, that's fine. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Mike Valenzano, your acting vice principal here at Cedar Grove High School this year, and Mr. Gogarty has a county seating meeting this evening, and he asked if I could come present a Coach of the Year award to our Mike Rizamini, and I said that I would be honored to do so. And I would be honored to do so for two reasons. In 2014, I had the honor of standing in front of the Cedar Grove Board of Education, and I was bestowed the Essex County Baseball Coach of the Year. And I know that it is a career-defining moment. It's something that no one can take away, and it's really a culmination of assistant coaches and players, and something that's still on my wall, and I know Mr. Gogarty is a Coach of the Year himself. Reason number two is, 20 years, old man, 20 years ago, I was a teacher at Memorial Middle School, and I had an eighth grader named Mike Rizamini. And obviously, I was a baseball coach here at the high school, and Mike grew into a state champion football player, a centerfielder and pitcher in baseball, and obviously, a state rep wrestler, a three-sport star for us. Coaching is a labor of love. You know, those 12-hour days become the norm, and I'll tell you, when you get to a point in your career where you're a head coach, it often coincides with the same time that you're starting a family, isn't that right, coach? So you do need just the truest of support systems, because as I said, you know, the hours come and go, and you have to, you know, kind of be there for, for everyone in your life. It's certainly a balance. There's no one more passionate than Mike Rizamini. Our wrestling team had their first playoff win in the last five years, so congratulations, coach. Also, we, we had 15 wins this year. We sent seven wrestlers to the regions and then districts, and again, I, you know, it's kind of come full circle, so I was happy that Mr. Gogarty asked me, because from a fellow father and a former coach, I'm proud of you. Ladies and gentlemen, the NJ SIA District 9, Region 3, Coach of the Year, Mike Rizamini.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm not gonna use the mic, I got a pretty loud voice. I'm here just accepting this award on behalf of the program. It really is not for me, it's for the boys, my assistant coaches, the administration. I demand a lot of them, and they give it in return, you know? I try and tell them, no one will work as hard as I do, but if not for the boys, if not for my assistant coaches, the parents, there's got a few here, you know I'm hard to deal with, but just know that going forward and forever, it will always be, the kids will have the best interest. Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, next, our next presentation this evening, if you are looking at the agenda, you'll see that there was a presentation for Outstanding Teacher of Speech and Theater, that we are putting that on hold this evening, and we're moving on to the next one. And so the next presentation is the Cedar Grove High School Program and Planning Snapshot, and Principal Bayer will be administering that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you for that introduction. Thank you for this opportunity to speak here tonight, for those of you who are in attendance, those of you watching from home. We have some real exciting things coming out of Cedar Grove High School, and it just so happens that if, some of that information fell on today, the day when the Board of Education meeting comes back to Cedar Grove High School. So I'm excited to see everyone back here. I have some great news to share, some of you, hopefully if you checked your emails, you're aware, but just give you some updates on things that are going on, some highlights of Cedar Grove High School. We have a lot to be proud of at Cedar Grove High School, and I wanna emphasize that this is a true team effort. And when I say team effort, I mean students, parents, teachers, administrators, board members. It's a true team effort, and it's a team win, and I'll get to that in just a moment in greater detail. First and foremost, I wanna talk a little bit about AP exam participation data. I had the opportunity to meet with the curriculum committee this week, Mr. Pallack, actually it was last week, Mr. Pallack and Mr. Groso, and, you know, if you know one thing about me, I'm a fierce defender of my family, I'm a fierce defender of the high school, of the students, of the teachers, of the staff, and all of the great things that we do here at Cedar Grove High School. So when I watched the last board meeting, there was some discussion about data informing goals and instruction and things like that, and I couldn't agree more with that comment, because we should absolutely, absolutely be using data to inform instruction, inform decision-making and goals and whatnot. And the comment was around AP exam registration, and I will say this, I immediately emailed Mr. Groso the next day, and I said, I just wanna put clarification out there, and I will give, I wanna give credit, and I know Mr. Pallack was gonna address this during committee meetings, so I don't wanna step on his toes, because I know he had planned to talk about this, but Mr. Pallack did call me the next day and address this, and talk about, you know, just the misunderstanding, or not the misunderstanding, the misreading of the data. But I wanted to have this opportunity to kind of clarify what that was. So there was a comment made regarding AP exam registrations, and why are only 60% of the students who are taking AP courses taking the AP exam? So in my email, I confirmed that last year, 89% of the students who are taking AP courses actually took the AP exam, and this year, for the 2022-2023 school year, 100% of the students who are enrolled in AP courses are registered for every single one of their exams that they're, that they're, that they're enrolled in. And again, I do want to acknowledge Mr. Pallack reached out to me, we corrected that. But it's important, I think, for the community here that. And I think that's a true testament to our students, to their dedication, to their AP courses, to our teachers, and selling to them the importance of taking that to our counselors. You know, just today, our counselors visited every single AP classroom, just to go over last-minute things to prepare for exams, what they need to do, what time to get there, what to bring, et cetera. So again, a true testament to all of our staff here at the high school. Now, Mr. Pallack did explain to me what he was referencing was score mastery, and the fact that we, as a high school, last year, and really honestly, historically, have showed a, only around 60% of our students are showing score mastery. So score mastery is defined as scoring three or higher on an AP exam. So just to give you a little update on what AP exams are, AP exams are courses, AP courses are courses that are sanctioned by the College Board. College Board works with colleges all across the country. Students take the AP course, upon successful completion, they take the AP exam. If they score a three or higher, many colleges will give them credit and will give them advanced placement when they get to college. So say, for instance, you take AP Calculus in high school, you score a five on the exam, many colleges, depending on your major, depending on the college, will give that student credit for the course, and will give them advanced standing in the mathematics track at that college. So it's a great benefit, a great way to offset costs for our students going on to college. Mr. Pallack was correct. It's actually 64% of our students showed mastery last year. Now, in my response to that, I will say this, data tells a great story, data tells a good story, and you've gotta look at data, and we should all be looking at data. I'm a big data guy myself. Data tells a story, but it doesn't tell the complete story unless you further unpack that data. So, what you have to, what you have to look at when you're looking at data is the outliers. We had 66 students, 66 exams, I'm sorry, that had less than a three last year. Of those 66 exams, 43 of those came out of three courses. And those courses, I don't wanna go into too much gray detail, too much detail, they were all taught by teachers who are predominantly by teachers who are no longer in the district. I'm gonna leave it at that. They are what you would consider outliers in the form of this data. But when you look at the remaining 10 AP exams, you've got an 83% mastery rate. That means of all of these courses right here, 83 of the, 83% of the exams had threes or hires. Again, those are all students who are significantly reducing their costs of higher education when they leave high school based on these AP courses. So I think that deserves a round of applause for our teachers. For not just our teachers, but our students, our counselors, our parents, who help push their students to get to that point. On top of that, there's some other highlights from the AP program. We had four courses last year that, now, let me just backtrack for a moment. The College Board every year gives a five-year, and five-year report, right? Shows you the last five years and how we did it in comparison to those five years. What I'm gonna present to you right now is four content areas that had the highest scores scores in the past four years. I would argue in many of these cases, they're the highest scores that Cedar Grove may have ever seen. Let's start with AP Biology. AP Biology was taught by Ms. Gretchen Bowie last year. I invited Ms. Bowie to attend tonight. She's the head coach of Sparta Softball. She has a big game tonight, couldn't attend. Ms. Bowie, in her first year teaching AP Biology with her students, taught 20 students. They all took the AP exam, and she scored an average, and her students scored an average of 3.55. As you can see, we're looking at the bottom row right there, the highest score that we've seen in five years, outstanding Ms. Bowie. AP Calculus. AP Calculus had five students enrolled last year, an average score of 3.6. Again, we're focusing in on that bottom row. AP English Literature. Ms. Amador. Ms. Amador is our AP Lit teacher. She's been doing it for a few years. Take a moment and look at these scores, folks. 10 students, every single one of them scored a four or higher. That is outstanding. I know Ms. Amador wanted to be here as well tonight. An average score of 4.5 in AP Literature, phenomenal. Physics 2. Now, I don't know about you, I probably couldn't touch physics, AP Physics in high school. That's one of the more challenging AP exams, one of the more challenging courses. We have not had an average score over three in the past five years. We weren't even able to offer the course in the 2020-2021 school year. Last year, average score of 3.33. So again, round of applause for our students, for our teachers, for our parents, for our counselors, doing that great work. All right, I'm going to take a little bit of time and talk about state rankings. You've probably seen my emails. If you attended my State of the School address, you'll know there was a big emphasis on state rankings during that speech. All right, we're going to talk about two different ranking systems tonight. The first, which is what my most recent emails have been about, are the New Jersey School Ratings, which were recently posted on NJ.com. Then we're going to move on and talk about NJ Monthly, which is another highly regarded form of rankings for the state of New Jersey. New Jersey School Ratings. Under federal education law, under the ESSA law, that's Every Student Succeeds Act, all students, all states must develop a school accountability system to measure school performance. So every state across the country is measuring performance and comparing that among schools throughout their state. The New Jersey Department of Education adopted the NJ School Rating System in the 26-2017 school year, shortly after ESSA was adopted. This form of ranking focuses on five major, five main indicators. Academic achievement, academic progress, graduation rate, progress towards achieving ELA proficiency, and absenteeism rates. And again, this data is pulled directly from New Jersey School Performance Reports. Okay, so every year, the Department of Education issues a New Jersey Performance Report for every school in the state of New Jersey, every elementary school, middle school, and high school. The data used for this rating system is pulled directly from that report. It provides two scores, a summative score, which is a number, essentially like you take a test, you get an 80 on the test, right? That's your score. A summative rating score, that is a percentile rating comparing you to other schools throughout the state. 50 on either of these scores is considered average, and the top 20%, is considered above Cedar Grove High School, based on the 2021-2022 data, scored a summative score of 87.02 and a summative percentile rating of 91.94%. What does that mean? That means according to this rating system, we scored better than 91.94% of high schools throughout the state of New Jersey. All schools, big and small, urban, suburban, high socioeconomic status, low socioeconomic status, all of them. That puts us at, just released today, 29th in the state out of 350 high schools. Guys, Cedar Grove High School, 29th in the state out of 350 high schools, truly phenomenal. And I'm going to go dive deeper into that in just a moment. That puts us, again, in the top 9% of New Jersey's in high schools. Here's our scores to give you some historical context. This was in my email. The, again, this rating system was adopted in the 26-2017 school year. You can see our rating from that year. You can see our summative score from that year. Then again, in the 27-2018 school year, again, our two scores. Look at the tremendous jump in the 2021-2022 school year. Okay, what does that mean? It means we have the second highest public high school rating in all of us at Essex County. One high school in Essex County had a higher rating score than us, and it was by about a half a point. Of those 28 schools who ranked ahead of us, all but six of them were vocational schools and academies. What does that mean? In order to get into a vocational or an academy, you have to apply. They look at your NJSLA scores. You're filling out an application, you're interviewing. They are taking the students with the best scores throughout the state, so it's no surprise that they're going to be in the top 10%, okay? Only six other traditional public high schools had higher ratings than us. Again, I want to stop applause, because I see a lot of students. That's a 20% growth since the 2017-2018 school year and a 50-plus increase in our numerical rank. So we're 29th. We were above 80, above 80 in that year, all right? A 50-plus jump. I want to talk a little bit now about New Jersey Monthly. New Jersey Monthly, in the field of education, is highly regarded as one of the other elite ranking systems for schools throughout New Jersey, all right? New Jersey Monthly updates their rank every two years, data is obtained from New Jersey School Performance Reports from the previous year. So as an example, in the 2018, they use 16-17 data. Rank is based on three main categories, school environment, student performance, and student outcomes. School environment has a heavy emphasis on AP, AP course enrollment, AP exam, AP exam participation, visual arts participation. Student performance has an emphasis on SAT scores and on score mastery on AP exams. And then student outcomes focuses mainly on graduation rates. Now, if you saw, if you saw my State of the School, this may be a little bit of a refresher for you, but I want to take a moment, because I think it's important to give historical context, right? What I'm putting up on the screen right now is our ranking since 2006 to 2018. What you'll see is in 2006, we had a rank of 55, pretty impressive if you ask me. 55 in the state. That's pretty, that's pretty impressive, 2006. So that was based on '04-'05 data. Slight drop the following two years. We went down to 70. Even bigger drop in 2010, down to 103. We gained back a little bit of momentum in the 2011, 2010-2011 year, go back to 74. And then from there, we kind of drop off, right? 103, 112, 172. Now, 2018 is the last time they released this rank because of COVID. All right, didn't come out 2020, and it didn't come out in 2022, all right? But I don't think that 172 is representative of our students, of our staff, of our parents, of our community, of our administration. We have to do better. For our visual learners in the room, you don't want to see that chart going upwards. You want to see it going closer to the one, closer to the zero. We're going in the wrong direction. So how did we get there? Okay? How did we get there? I believe there's a direct correlation to our, the way that we've been scheduling students for many, for many, for many years here, for many years. And I want to talk about that. What you're looking at on the left-hand screen there is our course levels here at the high school. We have regular or academic-level courses. The next level of rigor is honors courses, and a level beyond that is advanced placement courses, which I spoke about earlier. Our previous procedure prior to 2020-2021 school year, in order to jump from one level to the next, you needed a grade of 90 or higher in the preceding course, and a teacher recommendation, and a review of standardized test scores, just to go up a level, right? What I found, I took the opportunity to review data, over 14 years' worth of data and enrollment, and watching where our students enter when they, when they enter high school, what pathway do they follow in those four years, what are they taking when they graduation, when they graduate? What I found was a procedure that systematically prevented a vast majority of Cedar Grove High School students from ever having the opportunity to reach honors or AP courses. To give you some examples, only 20 to 30% of each incoming freshman class would have any chance of ever reaching certain AP courses based on their eighth-grade teacher recommendation. And I want to unpack that for a moment. Think about an eighth grader, right? Think about January of your eighth grade. Think about when you were an eighth grader. Think about the fact that your teacher makes a decision on you in January of your eighth grade year, and that decision set the path for how far you could ever grow in Cedar Grove High School, if you could ever get to those higher-level courses. Okay, we saw a significant decline in honors enrollment after ninth grade, and student and parent input was just simply not considered in the scheduling process. So how are we clawing our way back? How are we getting out of this hole? Because I think we can all agree that this is a hole that needs to be dug out of. And this, on the left hand of the screen, there's a direct correlation to this. All right, so how do we get out? Well, we have to look at the way we do things. We have to look at our policies, and we have to look at our procedures. All right, so one thing we've done, and the reason I'm talking about this tonight is because there's been a lot of skepticism about it, there's been a lot of concerns that I want to unpack a little bit tonight. What we did, starting with the 2021 school year, is we created an inclusive scheduling procedure. This is a procedure that I worked very closely with our faculty council. I spoke to many high school principals throughout the state, throughout the county, and I have to tell you, we were behind. Many schools have been doing this for years, and I think that that speaks a large portion to why we've been dropping and other schools have been going the other direction. We created a new eligibility criteria to go up a level. Now, students with a grade of 90 or higher can automatically go up a level. Students with a grade of B with a teacher recommendation can automatically go up a level. Students with a grade of B without a teacher recommendation may apply through an appeals process. Through that appeals process, we're looking at quarter-three and quarter-four grades. We're talking with the teachers. We're following those students, those students for the rest of the year, their NJSLA scores. We're looking at their transcripts, and ultimately administrative approval. So let's talk about some facts related to that. You know, one thing that Mr. Pallack helped me understand in our meeting the other day was that not everybody maybe understands what that means, right? And maybe that there's some misconceptions about what that looks like, and that students who maybe shouldn't be in those courses, are not prepared for those courses, are being thrown into those courses and thrown to the wolves. And I want to talk about that, because students, if you look at that criteria, it does not change the prerequisites for a course. If you need precal honors to get into AP Calculus, then you need precal honors to get into AP Calculus. Now, the path that gets you to precal honors is what we're looking at, but you still need those prerequisite courses. Two-level jumps are not allowed. Students are not jumping out of college prep or academic general-level courses and going to AP. That's not happening. We are not allowing it, because the students wouldn't be prepared, and that wouldn't be fair to our students or our staff. Students and parents now have a voice in the process. There's an appeal process. They can reach out to counselors, to teachers, and have those discussions. Work ethic, student interest, and commitment are now included in the process. We're not just looking solely at ability. There has to be a level of ability. We understand that, right? You have to be able to keep up with the strength, with the level of rigor in that classroom. We're not dulling down the rigor. The class is not changing. You have to be able to keep up. But I'm a firm believer that determination, that work ethic, that with proper support, our students can rise to that challenge, and they are. Teachers are now asked to have meaningful conversations with their students about their interests, goals, and what it takes to succeed academically prior to inputting those recommendations. What is this leading to? Okay, we have some statistics up on, up on the screen now. This is all indicators for New Jersey Monthly, and this is, this is the criteria that they're looking at. Percentage of 11th and 12th grade students taking at least one AP exam. The highest we've been in six years prior to this year was 40%. We're rising to 51% this year. That's 25 additional students taking at least one AP exam, despite the fact that we have a lower enrollment this year than we've had in the previous few years. Total number of exams taken divided by the number of 11th and 12th grade students, again, little confusing, but this is the criteria that NJ Monthly uses. The highest we've been prior to this year was 78%. We jumped to 95% for this school year. That's a 23% increase in one year. 49 more exams are being taken this school year, again, despite that declined enrollment. This is the number of AP courses taken, all the way to, you're right, you're looking at the number of AP courses taken, 200, we break the 200 threshold for the first time, not only break it, but shatter it at 217, and the percent of the student body taking at least one AP course. We rise to 28%. That's 19 more students taking AP courses this year, despite a declined enrollment, and an increase in 35 courses being taken by those students. Next year, for the first time ever, we will be offering 17 AP courses to our students. Again, one of those indicators for New Jersey Monthly. All right, so I talked a lot about how are we increasing our enrollment? How, the benefits of taking, now, the benefits are endless for our students taking higher level of courses. All right, we're challenging our students more, we're showing strength of schedule to colleges, to universities, to scholarship agencies, but there's obviously concerns about that, right? What is going to happen to those classrooms? Will those students survive? And these are some of the questions that have come my way. By opening up admission criteria into higher-level courses, you're compromising the integrity of the classroom. You're watering down the curriculum. Those students will only hold back the students who actually belong there. Students with IEPs don't belong in honors or AP classes. And finally, they either have it, or they don't. And what you're looking at right now is, with that new inclusive scheduling procedure, we have 56 students this year taking advantage of that. 56 of our students, just like we're here tonight, taking advantage of that, who maybe wouldn't have gotten into those courses previously. I'm tracking their progress, because those concerns, if they're true, then we have to be concerned about that, right? But here's the outcome data. Quarter-one grade, average, 88. Quarter-two grade, average, 88. Number of those students, of those 56 kids with a failing grade in quarter-one, 1. Number of those students with a failing grade in quarter-two, 0. Percent of students with straight As and Bs in quarter-one and quarter-two, 86%. 86% of those students. She has an immense amount of empathy, patience, and kindness for the students. Personally, I have counted on Kathy numerous times to assist me with challenging situations involving students. Kathy is reliable, patient, caring, and kind, all of the aspects necessary to make a great special education teacher. In addition to her role in the classroom and her union representative duties, Kathy is co-advisor for all school council. Kathy has helped organize countless fundraising events and school spirit events, including prom, homecoming, lip sync battles, and many more. The students view Ms. Hall as a valuable, reliable source of support and school spirit. She truly embodies what it means to be a Panther. Congratulations, Kathy Hall.
Is that on? Okay, our final presentation tonight is the 2023-24 Budget Presentation, and Mr. Davida will be presenting that. Well, there you are.
Here to present the public hearing, is our public hearing for our final budget tonight. I'd just like to give, this slide here just shows a basic timeline of the development of the budget. First, it starts at the building level. Every principal, every director, they develop their own budget, and it's presented to myself and the superintendent, and we review that with them. Then after that, we meet with the finance committee to review everything. Then the board approves the tentative budget, and it's sent down to the county office. The state aid figures are released in the middle of that after the governor does his budget address. And this year, we did receive an increase in our state aid of $271,000, so that was good news. And we also received an increase just under $120,000 for our debt service aid. This slide here, it shows our total annual budget for next school year is a little over $40 million. And I like to break it out into certain categories to make it a little easier to understand. I will go into detail for each of these categories later on. First is the instructional programs, special education, employee benefits, support services, operations and maintenance. All of these amounts make up the operating budget. Then we have the special revenue fund. This is basically all of the grants that we receive from the federal government, from the state government. It's included in there. And our debt service fund, this includes all of the principal and interest payments that we do to pay off our bonds. We currently have three bonds that we're paying off from our 2012 referendum, 2016 referendum, and 2019 referendum. This here is just a pie chart, just breaks out the operating budget, so it shows the percentages for each category that I just mentioned. The biggest one is instructional. This makes up about almost 30% of our operating budget. Next, we have employee benefits. That makes up almost 22% of the budget. Our support services are just under 20%. Our special education is just under 19%, and our operations and maintenance is 10% of our operating budget. This here is our operating revenue. The biggest amount here is our local tax levy. This is the amount that the taxpayers contribute towards our school budget. Our state aid amount is just a little over $2 million. As I said, we did have an increase of that $271,000 that adds into this. Our pilot money, the attach-up, we have an agreement with them where we get $1.2 million every year for the pilot program for the Hilltop Development. Budgeted fund balance, this is all of our surplus and unused surplus from previous years. Extraordinary aid, this number, every year, we apply to the state for all special education students that we send out of district. So this is the amount that we're estimating that we're going to be receiving. Tuition, we do receive some outside students. We have a progressions program at the high school, and we receive three students from Verona. We also receive a student from Glen Ridge for a program in the high school, and also our integrated preschool program, that amount is included in here. And withdrawal from maintenance reserve, this is another reserve account that we have, and this includes, the $200,000 is any money that has to be used towards ordinary maintenance. So anytime we want to repair something, it can't be used towards, you know, putting in a brand-new roof or something like that. It has to be used for ordinary maintenance. This is continued for our revenue. We have our aftercare program with Alphabet. The $60,000 is the minimum amount that we will receive as per the contract with them. The interest income, this is what we receive from the banks, the rates have been going up, so there is a slight increase here. Our miscellaneous income is income that we receive, any prior year refunds, any E-rate refunds, that's all included here. Rental of our buildings, we have been renting out our, the high school field for, some clubs use it. We also, our high school auditorium, we use for our dance recitals, so that amount here, we charge them for that. The semi-program, we do have a waiver for this. We're not required to do this because our special education amount of students that we have is under the amount, but even though we have a waiver, we're still allowed to apply for it. So it can hurt if we apply for it, if we don't get it here, it's just money that we can account for. And transportation is money that we receive from parents that aren't eligible to receive the busing. If there's room on our bus, we place them on the bus for a fee. And this is just another pie chart of the operating budget for our revenues. As you can see in yellow, the majority of the money that we have from our revenues is our local tax levy, a little over 85%. Then our state aid is just under 6%. The pilot money is a little over 3%. Our fund balance is about 3%. Extraordinary aid is a little over 1%. And the remaining 1% is all the tuitions and maintenance reserve and aftercare program that's included in that. Now, I'll talk about our expenditures. This $36,582,816 matches the revenues that we're projecting. This slide here is our instructional programs. As I mentioned before, I'll just go into a little bit more detail. We have a regular program. This includes all the salaries of all of our regular education teachers, any substitutes, class coverage or anything like that. It also includes some software services that we have, our copier leases, and any supplies for every grade level. Basic skills includes the salaries and supplies for that program. Media services includes the salary of a media specialist and some software programs that we have. I'll talk a little about this later. Instructional staff training, this includes the percentage of our salaries of our district supervisors, and also any curriculum writing, some professional development subscriptions, and our evaluation software. Special education, this includes all of our, the instruction line is all of the salaries of all of our special ed programs. We have a LLD program, resource room, preschool disabilities, and also a progressions program. Our out-of-district tuition, we do send out 23 special ed students to private disabled schools and a couple other LEA districts. And some of this tuition is offset by the IDA grant, which is a federal grant that we apply for. Our related extraordinary services, this includes all of our services for our special ed students, both in-house and also some that are out-of-district. And our child study team includes the salaries and supplies for all of our child study team members. Employee benefits, social security amount, this includes any payments that we make to the state for non-certified staff. Retirement contributions includes the pension payments to the state for non-certified staff. And when I say non-certified staff, it's such as secretaries, custodians, basically anybody that does not have a certificate is included in here. The workers' comp numbers are the premium that we pay to our insurance for our workers' comp coverage. Tuition reimbursement is as per contract with our union for reimbursement of classes. Other contractual obligations includes some sick day payouts, some custodial uniforms, that's all part of the contract also. The big number here is our health benefit number. We are part of the state health benefit program called the school employees' health benefit program. Some districts look to go out of the state plan this year because it did have a large increase. We looked at that with our broker, but unfortunately, our medical claims history was 137.6% for last school year, so that's a very high percentage, so that made it unable for us to leave the state plan, so we're forced to stay in the state plan because of that high claims history. Our prescription claims history was also high, it was 125% last school year, so that limited where we can go, and it caused our increase in premiums because of that. There's our support services. Our attendance and health is obviously our nursing. Guidance is all of the counselors that are in every school district, every school, sorry. General administration is the salary of our superintendent, our administrative assistants, and also professional fees such as attorney fees, audit fees. Our New Jersey School Board dues are included in this number. School administration, this includes the salaries of all of our principals, vice principals, directors and secretaries at the school level, and also all supplies. Essential services and IT, this is all the salaries for all the business office and technology department and some software. Transportation, we have, over the last couple of years, we have bought some district buses, so this did help to lower this number. We have four buses now, so it includes the salaries of our bus drivers, and also the routes for all of our special ed students that we send out of district. We do have 13 special ed routes. We have four regular ed routes, so that number is included in here. And our athletics and co-curricular, this includes all the salaries of all of our coaches, our trainer, all of our advisors, that are for all the clubs. Next is our operations and maintenance. The maintenance, custodial, and grounds amounts here, this includes all the salary, supplies, and services that are needed to maintain every building, and also included in this number is the gas and electric charges that we pay to the PSCNG, and also the liability insurance for every building is included here. Security is the amount for all of the armed security guards that are in every building, and our capital outlay is, majority of this is a debt service payment that we're required to pay to the state. This slide, I'd just like to do a cost analysis of the entire budget. I like to break it into two costs, you have your fixed costs and your discretionary costs. Now, your fixed costs are mostly all of your, you know, salaries, benefits, pension contributions, insurance and all that. That amounts to $29 million, a little over $29 million. We also have a student category. This includes mostly special education, transportation, and other categories, mostly professional costs that we have, legal, auditor, energy, and software fees are included in here. So this amounts to basically a fixed cost where we pretty much know we're going to have this every year of $34.5 million. That means our discretionary costs are a little over $2 million. This is all of our supplies, professional development, facility repairs, athletics, that's all included in this number. And this is just a chart to show you here. The yellow number is the biggest, a little over 80%. This is the personnel amount. So just like every school district, the majority of every budget is personnel. Student is a little over 11%. The other costs, the professional costs are a little over 3%. So this makes up 94.5% of our budget, and the discretionary, or the green part, is our discretionary part of our budget. Now, we do have some new items that are included in the budget. We do have some personnel, an LDTC will be used to help lessen the load for our special education department. We do have media specialists at the elementary level, an ABA teacher, which is needed at the elementary level also, because we do have students that are in kindergarten class that have to move up a level, so we have to provide this. And the director of guidance and counseling and supervisor of curriculum, pre-K to four, this is in question marks here, just that this is a board initiative that we're currently working to see if we can fit this in the budget. It is an ongoing process, but we have been looking at it with the finance department, with the superintendent, to see if we'll be able to accommodate this, or we might have to make some cuts in order to meet this, just with the financial constraints. And also, some instructional items we're allowed to put in here. We are going to have a new reading program in grades at the elementary level, and also a new math program for the middle school level, and some new science kits. And as in past years, we have been keeping up with the initiative of the one-to-one, you know, one-to-one district, so we will be, students in grades one, five, and nine will be getting new Chromebooks. This slide here, I just want to talk about the tax impact, which I'm sure everybody's concerned about. This is the tax impact for our operating budget. Our average assessed home is $474,900, so the average increase amounts to just under $168 for the year. Per month, that's just under $14. Per week, $3.23, and per day, $0.46. And this amounts to, the estimated school tax increase is going from 1.433 to 1.468 or 2.47%. And that includes the presentation.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Very clear. Okay, we're going to move around the agenda a little bit this evening, because I was in, actually, our student liaison, Mr. Wilson, was in contact with me, and we had a conversation that he informed the board that we had some students here tonight that wanted to address the board, and knowing that it was such a lengthy meeting, that it was going to be a lengthy meeting with all the presentations, we are going to alter the order a little bit, and we're going to give the students an opportunity to present to the board. It will be the open comment, the public comment section, but it will only be for the students. And, I'll get to that. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so for that section only, I have a couple students identified here, so if I miss anyone, just let me know. Eric Silverman, you're up first.
I'm a junior at Cedar Grove High School, and I'm here tonight because I'm concerned about the state of mental health in our district, and more importantly, I am deeply concerned and beyond horrified by the decision of this board to eliminate the mental health coordinator position from our district. I would just like to start off by saying that I am appreciative of the district administrator's efforts and pursuit to remove barriers in regards to taking more rigorous courses and striving for academic excellence, as I previously articulated at the last meeting I spoke at in February of last year. However, I'm not here tonight to tout the administration's accomplishments, rather I am here, sorry, rather I am here to urge the Board of Education not to further stoke the flames of our district's mental health crisis by removing one of the greatest assets to the student body. Going to school here every day, I have seen the epidemic of mental health issues plaguing the student body. I've seen my peers struggling with anxiety and depression. I've seen them being pushed to their limits, desperately trying to balance a rigorous course load, several high-commitment extracurriculars, and their home life. Now, more than ever, the student body vitally needs mental health services and support, with many of us having our schedules filled with honors and AP-level courses. As students in high school, we are in the final transitionatory period between childhood and adulthood, developing both physically and emotionally. It is at this time when we need mental health resources the most. The action you are taking now will have great implications for the students of Cedar Grove, not only now, but for the rest of our lives. As our elected representatives, we look to you to make decisions on our behalf that will benefit us and help us thrive as students and as individuals. Some individuals have touted this decision, claiming that the only aspect that our education that matters is academic excellence and rigor. The very notion that this district should put a large emphasis on academic excellence while disregarding our mental health and well-being is absolutely ridiculous. Let me be very clear, we are students, not statistics. We cannot move forward with these reckless acts and prioritize high rankings and statistics over our mental health. At this time, I urge you to reflect deeply upon my statement, along with the statements of all of the other students gathered here today to speak on this issue. And I urge you all to... And I urge you all to figure out a way that we can provide mental health resources for the students of this district in another capacity if this position will no longer exist moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. So, so all the students that are gonna be speaking tonight are gonna be addressing the mental health concerns, so we're gonna allow everybody to speak, and then we are, as a board, will address it in our meeting tonight. Okay? So, next I have Jessica Morales.
Hello, I'm Jessica Morales, a senior at Cedar Grove High School. I have come to you today to, once again, discuss an issue with our students' mental health. In the Cedar Grove High School Psychology Club, we have discussed that students today are feeling overwhelmed due to the way our school system is running. We are pressured to join AP classes, extracurricular activities, clubs. As a result, we end up with not only a heavy workload, but no time to enjoy our teenage years. This constant pressure to perform well academically is taking a toll on our well-being so much, to the point where students say they feel like robots, rather than students. They claim they aren't going to school to learn anymore, they're going to school to maintain good grades. Our brains take in and throw out knowledge like machines. We wake up, go to school, work, 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 eat lunch if we're lucky, work, 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 go to practices and rehearsals, get out at six if we're lucky, go home, work, eat dinner if we're lucky, shower if we're lucky, work more, go to sleep before 2:00 AM if we're lucky, wake up and do it all over again. Students are using their lunch periods to work, their study halls to catch up on sleep, and teachers have the nerve to say, "Why are you so exhausted all the time? You look like you're on another planet. Don't be lazy, it'll only take you an hour." We're burnt out, we're overwhelmed, the majority of us wake up dreading just walking into the building. We didn't sign up for this. It's important for the school to take a more holistic approach to education and prioritize the overall well-being of students in all of our districts. We can do this by having mental health days, where we take a break from our lessons to play games, socialize, listen to music, and breathe. We can also incorporate staff training to bring awareness to these issues. We need to ensure that teachers are able to create a comfortable environment for students in the classroom. Students need support. If you want us to be successful, help us do that. Teach us how to manage time, teach us how to communicate, teach us how to survive in this world you're about to send us off into. Give us a foundation, support us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Next we have Emily.
Hi, I'm Emily Pierre, student at Cedar Grove High School. Our district is currently facing a serious mental health crisis. Over the past few weeks, I've spoken to both peers and adults in our district, to compile a group of ever concerning aspects of our school's attempt to better the mental health of its students. On the very first day of this school year, we were all given a new student ID. This year's included three numbers on the back, each for a different suicide hotline. As teenagers, many of us made jokes to our classmates, but I believe this to be so much more than a new addition to our IDs. We recognized this was a state law, not a district decision, but our administration was made completely aware of this, and decided not to address it to students or staff. While we greatly appreciate all support provided by the district over previous years, by including these numbers, our school is acknowledging there are problems regarding students' mental health, and if the action they decided to take was providing suicide hotlines rather than going to the source itself, the students, there are bigger problems here than mental health. Clearly, they acknowledge we're struggling due to school, yet instead of helping us, or even just asking if we are okay, they choose to allow us to get as far as wanting to kill ourselves before trying to help us. If they realize that school pressure is driving us to the point of suicide, why are they still pushing high-level classes filled with pressure and anxiety on students without providing open resources? As an AP-level student myself, I've experienced these pressures firsthand, and understand how draining these classes can be when combined with extracurriculars and sports. Moreover, as a student, I am so unbelievably tired of being called lazy. I believe myself to be speaking on behalf of most of the student body, and certainly of every other student speaking to you today, when I say, "We are not lazy, we are tired." Tired of doing homework till 2:00 AM, tired of our setting our alarms till 5:30, just so we can get an extra hour of studying before school. Tired of spending our lunches doing homework in our study halls sleeping. Tired of being told we are the reason for such a rapid decline in school spirit and participation. Tired of being interrogated by everyone around us about which colleges we're thinking about. Tired of obsessively checking Genesis just to make sure that our grades are staying where we are expected to keep them. We no longer go to school to learn, we go to school because we have to. School has become the purpose of our entire developmental years. I spend more time at school than I do at home, so why is there such a small group of people who seem to truly care? This is not a cry for help nor attention. I hope this, for some of you, this is an eye-opener, as it's the kind of environment you are sending your children to every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Eva?
I'm Isabella Cattalo.
And we're both students, speaking on behalf of peer leaders and the Psychology Club. In light of May being Mental Health Awareness Month, and given the fact that nearly all indicators of poor mental health and suicidal thoughts and behaviors have increased from 2001 to 2021, the peer leaders working with the freshmen on seven mindsets and supporting their needs as students and peers are concerned. The National Suicide Prevention Lifeline posted on the back of our student IDs reinforces this. The state of depression, anxiety and mental health is important, so we decided to anonymously give our freshmen an opportunity to address their concerns. This is what we found. The five main areas of concern were: time management and schoolwork, high levels of anxiety, struggling with peer relationships, general lack of support, and general feeling of being overwhelmed. Some quotes that we found that were notable included: "I wish we had mental health days at school." "I have a problem with overthinking." "I feel overwhelmed and discouraged." "I can't do well academically if my brain isn't functioning properly." "I'm just embarrassed by everything." "Just because I get As doesn't mean I'm okay." "Untreated mental health issues lead to violence against ourselves and others." "We are still kids, and we are not robots." And the list goes on and on.
As children, we are not equipped to deal with all the adult issues we are asked to manage. We have to navigate multiple classes and Google classrooms, school involvement in clubs and activities, work, sports, peer relationships, family stressors, school shootings, social media pressures, and the list goes on and on. We are stressed and anxious, we have no time for the fun stuff. This is just the beginning of our transition from childhood to adulthood, and we need more support. We have a few suggestions to help support us. Mental health days for the entire district with community involvement, team-building opportunities between students and staff, professional development for teachers on mental health and SEL, and sensitivity training. Is the board willing to help us as we focus on our mental health? As previously quoted, "We can't do well academically if our brain isn't functioning properly," and "untreated mental health issues lead to violence against ourselves and others." The Youth Risk Behavior Survey reports, "The percentage of students who experienced persistent feelings of sadness or hopelessness seriously considered attempting suicide, made a suicide plan, and attempted suicide increased. The percentage of students who were injured in a suicide attempt did not change. Please hear us and help us." The CGHS Peer Leaders and Psychology Club.
Before you leave, can you just repeat your recommendations, your suggestions?
Yeah.
I got most of them, I didn't get them all.
Mental health days for the entire district with community involvement, team-building opportunities between students and staff, professional development for teachers on mental health and SEL, and sensitivity training for the teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, you're up.
Hi, I'm Ian Wilson, and I'm a student at CGHS. I wanna speak a little bit to my personal experience. I think before, there's just been a lot of circumstantial and fundamental changes with school across the country. Things have gotten very intense, both academically and kind of polarizing, social issues have also made things very intense. I think that, in the course of the past few years, it has become a lot more prominent and important to push yourself to do, like, take harder classes, and I think that's obviously important, but sometimes we are pushed to do those things without actually thinking about if we can handle it. And I learned last year that I really, really couldn't, and I struggled really badly with my mental health, I wasn't really sleeping, I wouldn't eat lunch, I joined too many clubs. Obviously, a lot of this comes with time management, and you learn those skills by doing that, but I think it's important to feel a little more support from the adults around us as well as we learn. Communication is what's really important, I believe, and that's something that the board has started to emphasize this year, which I think is amazing, as well as the also council is trying to, as I know. I think it's just about communicating with each other, because it's very hard, because we all get wrapped up in our own things a lot, 'cause everybody has their own things. So, everybody's not gonna get wrapped up in that, but I think it's important that we communicate and actually try to work towards a solution, 'cause we have to remember that, although obviously, we're supposed to support our whole community, a lot of the community revolves around supporting our growing children, and helping us to grow in a safe and happy environment. It's a really great group of people over there, very smart students, very, very nice people, and I think that it's a great group of people to represent this issue as well, because I know these people, I know how hard they work, but I know that even they struggle to keep up, and they're some of the smartest people I've ever met. And I just think that it's important to address these things. One great thing that Mrs. Minelli, who is the leader, peer leader, and peer leaders and psych club, brought up, that I think is a very great idea, is having a kind of, maybe physical, maybe digital, calendar that all teachers can look at, in order to schedule their assignments, so that we don't have things overlapping so much, because I'll find nights where I do have a little bit of time, but other nights where I'm like up till like two or three, and that's just not good for me the next day. And then I come to school, and I don't feel like I'm learning, and I feel like I'm just like retaining stuff, and it's a mess. But, yeah, that's what I wanted to say right now. Thank you again for listening, and thank you to everybody. Sorry to cut the line a little bit, but part of the issue with mental health is the fact that we are so busy. Emily's still in her lacrosse uniform right now, she just came from a lacrosse game. We all have AP exams in the next two weeks, so, yes, thank you for listening.
You're very welcome.
Hi, I'm Amanda Eusis, I'm a junior at Cedar Grove High School. I'll also be addressing the mental health. When I pull into the school parking lot every morning, I often have the same thought that I have when I show up to work. Wow, I wanna go home already. The only difference with work is I don't mind being there as much, because I get paid. I used to be one of those kids who loved going to school, but recently that's changed. Obviously, we can't be paid monetarily for going, but we can get paid with care. Right now, with mental health being put on the back burner, it feels like this district doesn't care about the mental health of its students. We feel like we're just numbers, just test scores and statistics and data, all of which contribute to our high ranking. Despite popular belief, it is a fallacy that the honors kids are the ones who aren't struggling. They may not be struggling academically, but that pressure leads to internal struggle, and oftentimes, poor mental health. Personally, I was never in therapy before the beginning of this school year, due to school and personal-related things, and I know the same goes for many of my peers. By taking away the importance of mental health in this district, you are taking away valuable resources from kids who need it. It may be the only thing getting them through their day. At Cornell University, the suicide rates were so high that they had to put up nets on their bridges, and other high-ranking academic institutions are doing this as well. It feels as though we're talking and no one is listening. Tone-deaf comments from teachers such as, "Oh, you're fine," and an overall lack of empathy only perpetuates this issue. While I understand it is important for institutions to be academically rigorous, there can always be a balance found. We need more support for our existing mental health services in order to ensure our students are able to find their way through this incredibly challenging school life balance. Thank you.
To all the students that wanted to speak tonight, did everyone have an opportunity? Okay, great. No, thank you.
Thank you.
So, a lot of things said, I tried to take notes as we went along, I have a couple comments that I'd like to share, and as the meeting progresses, this is a big part of our, a portion of our meeting tonight, and I do understand that you have, it's late, and you need to get home and all that, so I'm gonna try to give you what I can give you in a nutshell, without having you having to stay for the remainder of the meeting. Okay? But the meeting is obviously taped, so you certainly can circle back at a later time if your specific questions or issues are not addressed in some capacity. So, just bear with me and my chicken scratch here. So first of all, I wanna commend all of you for your courage to stand up and speak tonight, and to address the board, the community, your family, I'm sure everyone at home, and your families specifically, are very proud of you. It takes a lot of courage and guts to do that. I'm guessing that you're speaking, you're a small group here, but I'm sure you're speaking for the majority of the students in not only Cedar Grove, but in the world in the general, but our focus obviously is here in Cedar Grove. Every one of you, every one of your statements indicate how, like I said, most people are, most youngsters are feeling, mental health is a serious concern. It is not a subject that we, that anyone in this district is putting on the back burner. Okay? So that's one thing that I wanna start off by saying. Will it look a little bit different? It may. It may look a little bit different. As a matter of fact, we believe that we are enhancing it on all levels. I like the ideas of some of the suggestions, I saw Mr. Grosso taking notes, I know Mr. Bear was taking notes over there. These are wonderful suggestions, because often what happens is, we're put in these positions to make decisions that we think is best for students, for children, and we forget that one of the most valuable pieces of the puzzle is student voice, and that is something that we are committed as, and the administrators are committed as, of increasing student voice. And so, the brief statements that you've made tonight have already opened up lots of doors and lots of opportunities that we, as the adults, that are supposed to know it all, can already start to implement some changes and some ideas. And I do believe that the direction that we are going as a district does take into consideration some of the things you mentioned tonight, so I thank you again for having the courage to come forward with that. We are willing, the administrators, the teachers, the community, we are willing, we are prepared to offer the assistance that we hear you saying you need. Okay? So I cannot stress that enough. We hear what you're saying, and we are actively working on supporting you and everybody to the best of our abilities. And I would like to encourage you to continue to keep speaking out, especially as things unfold and conversations occur in the individual buildings, to get involved. So, what else do I have for that? And mental health is not on the back burner. I promise you that.
May I say something?
Absolutely.
You're looking at a board up here, a board of five members, okay? Four of us are currently, or have a career in education, three of us active still. I go into school every day, I see the pressures that you students face, I see you're overextended, you have other things in your lives going on that we didn't, with social media and pressures of that sort. We are committed to your mental health. Okay? I can assure you, we're not gonna abandon any mental health, we're only gonna, like Ms. Doros said, we're only gonna enhance it. And there's no one that sees it more firsthand, whether it's between our own kids at home, or our kids that we walk into the building every day. We recognize it, we know it's a necessity to have. So you should feel comfortable looking at us up here, knowing that we live it every day with you, watching you guys struggle with those issues. So, again, like we said, we fully encourage you, we're backing it, it just might look different.
And we welcome the feedback. And we welcome the feedback as things roll out.
Some great ideas.
Yeah, fantastic. Anybody else want to add anything in that? Okay, not at this point.
It's excellent.
Again, I appreciate your time, your patience in staying and the courage to speak. And did the lacrosse team win? All right. There you go. That's the icing on the cake. Okay.
We just got to get her Cedar Grove. She had a Clifton on her. We need, we got to get you a Cedar Grove sweatshirt.
So now I'm all out of order here. We're going to do public comment on the agenda first. Okay, so at this point, we're going to move to public comment, agenda items only. We have a couple who have signed up. There is, again, this portion of the open comment is agenda items only. There's a couple people who have signed up that does not have anything that's on the agenda. It's pertaining to mental health. That is not on the agenda, so I think you may have just signed up on the wrong list. So we'll move that to the...
Tell us what agenda item mental health is, and we'll identify that.
So what resolution? Can you tell me what?
I have no idea. Is it under resignation?
There's no resolution tonight for mental health.
If I may, I'd like to make a comment in something that was brought up by the youngsters and was in the budget, and I'd like to question that.
Huh? Yeah. Yeah, no, that's fine. There is another, before I get to you, ma'am, there's another, Mrs. Mariello. No? Okay. Because you didn't indicate which, so I was just, so, ma'am, would you like to come up? Sure. It's regarding the budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually...
Wait, before you, you could stand there, but I have to read my little thingy. You know, my little... The Board of Ed recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interests. Public participation shall be governed by the following rules. Please preface comments by stating your name, address, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. Please be mindful of your statement length and keep each statement to the three-minute limit. Participants may not speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. Please direct all your statements, questions, or inquiries to the presiding officer. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, and/or terminate a participant's statement, question, or inquiry if it is too lengthy or abusive, obscene, or may be defamatory. These rules may be waived if necessary to protect the privacy or to maintain an orderly operation of the board meeting. Now you make it.
Agreed. Thank you. I came here tonight wearing two hats.
Can you just state your name and address?
Yes, I started to say that. As a private citizen, I'm Arlene O'Connell. I've been living here in Cedar Grove for over 60 years now. I live on Bennett Avenue, and as I said, I have been a homeowner here for over 60 years. I have a couple of concerns. Going into my professional capacity, I had been an educator since 1961. I resigned from public education and then went to work for Rutgers University. At the time, it was UMDNJ, as the coordinator of the Traumatic Loss Coalition here in Essex County. I covered 21 different communities. What I want to say is that these youngsters who came up here tonight were very brave. I applaud them. I applaud all of you for being able to express as eloquently as you did the situation that's at hand. In my role as coordinator of the Traumatic Loss Coalition, one of the things I do is suicide awareness and prevention. I go into the different districts and I run workshops for staff members. It's a mandatory program that has to be for two hours for all educators and anyone on staff in the school districts. So I am acutely aware of what's going on in Essex County. When these children, and I'm sorry to refer to you as children, when they talk about the stresses that they are under and the concerns they have for eliminating a position where someone is highly qualified and taking that position and dividing it into two separate entities as director of guidance and supervisor curriculum troubles me deeply. You've got a young woman here who has been the director, the district mental health and anti-bullying coordinator. She has done an outstanding job as far as I know. As far as I, my background has told me that there have to be evaluations done of this person, and these evaluations determine whether she is rehired or not. I just question if, I'm going to ask, put you on the spot, Mr. Baer, have you had negative evaluations of the young woman?
Excuse me, Ms. O'Connell, you have to address the board.
All right. I would like to go behind because Mr. Baer is her direct supervisor. I'd like to know...
It's a personnel issue. He can't respond.
Oh, okay. But I want to know, we have had in Essex County problems with school districts who have ignored behaviors where one student is bullying and intimidating other students. In this district, there is, has become an environment that is bordering on that, not only with the children, but with the adults. And this is what I find troubling. People are losing sight of the fact that adults are behaving in a manner that we would not allow in our children.
Okay. I would like to comment on that because there's many things that you're saying that I, that I agree with personally. And as Mr. Marzullo spoke, most of us up here are educators, so we are very aware of the current state of the mental health of our students. But I want to correct you, and I want to correct for the community and those who are watching at home, that your information is inaccurate when you say that we are, and I'm going to try to quote your words, "doing away with a position and splitting it into two." That is completely inaccurate. And as our meeting goes on, when we talk about curriculum and instruction and personnel on our committee reports, we will get into that more specifically. But it's unfortunate that information was shared through social media and word of mouth. It's inaccurate, and it has caused a lot of concern.
And it's very disturbing.
Absolutely. And I understand where you're coming from, because if I was not involved in the process and didn't know the truth and the accurate information, I would be equally upset with you. So I, as I ask our youngsters, and I will ask any community member who has concerns with what misinformation was shared, we will be discussing this further and give some more direction as we move on.
I would like to see that because we have to remember one important thing. The way the adults behave is being observed by the children.
Yes, we all agree with you.
And first and foremost, this district has to take those children into concern. We have got to watch what's happening with them. Last year, in New Jersey alone, we had 22 suicides. Four females, 13 males. And the reason that the male numbers are so high is because they use more lethal means. That doesn't mean that our young ladies, you see a predominantly female group here, that does not say that our females are in desperate need of help. That is where the highest increase has become throughout the United States in female suicides. That's why we have to be tuned into it, and that's why we have to set an example as adults and as educators. And I still consider myself in that field. Seventeen years I've been the coordinator of the Traumatic Loss Coalition, and we need to make sure that we do everything to preserve the mental health, the good mental health for our children. And it is tragic that on the back of your ID, you have suicide hotlines. What is the message that we're giving these kids? We know you're in trouble. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so I close that portion of the meeting. We're going to move on to our committee reports. Now, again, we're going to do things a little bit different tonight because of the, trying to respect everybody's time. It is late already. I'm just going to go through a summary of some, lots of events. It's been a while since we had a last meeting. We've had tons and tons of fantastic things going on in the community. I don't want to cut them short, so I do want to go through them very briefly, and then we're going to move on to our committee reports. We don't have as many committee reports, but we do want to spend some time talking about curriculum and instruction and some of the ideas that we've been talking about all night. First, I want to start off with the softball, the black and gold softball tournament Friday and Saturday. That was really exciting to be a part of. Art shows, North End and South End. South End was this evening. I hope everyone had an opportunity to go to them. The Wizards event on March 24th, that was packed. The gym was completely packed. That was such a great evening. Our students had a blast. Our littles that were out on the court was just amazing to watch. Lot of fun. Honor Society inductions. What an exciting week. I attended personally both of them. Congratulations to our, all of our inductees. Music Matters, attended the Bucks County Student Theater Festival. We took home awards in the Spotlight Moment, and Jessica Morales, outstanding award for outstanding vocals. That was an awesome accomplishment. All Student Council had the color run on Sunday, this past Sunday. Mr. Wilson, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just an announcement, all senior graduate parents, Project Graduation has the fundraiser for the signs, the graduation signs. The link is out on the Facebook page, so if you're looking for that, make sure you get that order in. We had the Progressions Program fundraiser. The APT sponsored the beefsteak on April 21st to raise money for our outdoor communication board. April is Autism Awareness Month, and this coming Sunday, April 29th, is the Autism Puzzle Tournament. So if you did not get a chance to go to that last year, please try to make some time to go to that on Sunday. That is a fantastic event. Sunday, April 30th, is the dedication to the Nikki Storm's Playground at South End. That will be at 11:00 a.m. Am I right on that, that time?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Thank you, Mrs. DiMaggio. So I will be at that. And Teacher Appreciation Week is May 8th to May 12th, although teacher appreciation should be every day, but we're going to pick out that week, so I'm sure they'll appreciate any high fives or thank yous would be enough, I think. And anybody that I missed, I apologize in advance. I tried to, it's been a while between our last meeting, so I tried to get an account for everything. I know Mrs. Keegan wants to talk a little bit about town council. Yes? Want to touch base on that?
Town council has announced they have an Arbor Day tree planting event on this Friday, April 28th at 4:00 p.m. It's going to be at Tranquility Park, which is near South End, kind of where Highland and Elmwood meet. And then they're working on moving forward with developing a community garden at Morgan's Farm. They talked started about this back in February, and they're hoping to provide an opportunity for students to get involved. So, Mr. Grasso, do you know, has there been any discussion on that?
With Morgan's Farm? Yes, there has been.
Mr. Young, right?
Yeah, with Mr. Young and the high school has participated. Sorry. The high school has participated, and they're going to be helping farm.
Good. Great.
Yep.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Marzullo, Mr. Grasso, anything you want to add at this point?
Well, we did have a finance meeting on the 20th.
You're right.
But Mr. DeVita covered everything during the budget presentation, so nothing further to report.
Okay. Mr. Wilson, I didn't forget you. You're up.
Hi. I hope everybody had a great spring break. It's been a long time, as Mrs. Dora said, since we've had a meeting. I thought I missed one, actually. I was scared of that. But yes, we just had the color run, and that was our big event this year. And I had a fun day. Mrs. Holz is in the, in the audience back there. She's one of the co-advisors for the also council, and I think we created a very great and thorough event. I think it was very fun, and with work, I think it's at a base level for a much bigger event because there could have been more people there, but the people who were there, I think, had a good time. A lot of people are in the also council here. Yeah, so I think, I think it was good. Yeah. But I think, as I said, next year is something that could grow. I'm hoping for this to become maybe a staple to make more money for, back to our grades because we've lost a lot of money because of COVID, obviously. I think it's like, I think it's just very important that we continue to advertise as well because, as I've said basically all year, it's been really hard to get student involvement. And I think a lot of the things correlate that we've been talking about with communication, student involvement, and mental health. And that's why I'm really glad that the psych club and peer leaders came to speak tonight because I think communication's super important, and to be reminded of like specific voices of children definitely helps to see our point of view, for sure. I think that that'll help to move discussion in the right direction so that you know kind of where we're at. And we're also in a very stressful time of the year, so you caught us at a scary moment. But yeah, I also want to say thank you to Mr. Baer for helping with color on and being very lenient when we kept changing the date and stuff, and it moved back, moved forward. So I really appreciate that we could not have done it without you. Our next event coming up is going to be Panther Puff, which is going to be an event that happens during the day. It's a flag football event that, in which people who don't play football will be playing for each grade. And then people who do play football will coach, like the team, there's going to be one team per grade, and it's like a tournament. So grade versus grade and the top two grades versus. And the people who do play football will be coaching and helping their grade, so it's kind of like all in good fun type of event. It's going to be during our Spring Pep Rally, so I'm really excited about that. Sadly, I will not be there.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm going to Vermont for our music trip that week. So me and the vice president of the also council, C.C. Spiegel, will not be there, but we have our other officers, Ava Dubonsky, Bobby Kelly, Jia Delmore, and Devin Taggart, who will be there. And I'm more than sure that they will be able to cover it. And I think that it's also a good opportunity for some people, like who will be seniors next year, to lead an event. And I'm very excited for that. I'm very excited to see the pictures, and I'm going to help plan it as well. But we're headed towards the end of the year, and we're kind of closing out with also council. There's a few more small events that we're planning in like late May and June. This is our last event that's like big, but I just want to say thank you for your support and offering to help me throughout this year. It's been hard sometimes because sometimes I feel like I'm hitting a brick wall with this stuff, but it's been good, I think. Things have gotten better progressively during the year. And I think even when there's small numbers or the numbers are dwindling, people who go to these events do have fun, and I'm hoping that that sets the groundwork for it to improve a little bit. Thank you.
Thanks. Curriculum. Mr. Palick.
Before I start, Ian, you never cease to amaze me. You're magnificent at this.
Oh, thank you.
I was a principal for many, many years, had many student representatives, and I wish I had somebody like you communicating to the public and giving this perspective to the students. You truly do an outstanding job. Also, I'd like to thank the students. I think your words were very well spoken. I think you make tremendous points about the stress and the anxiety that you're facing every day as, as we face life and life is changing. And I know I worry about that with my grandsons who are in the elementary school right now. And I worry about those things, and I see it every day, and even dealing with things with little children like that, I see those things. And I know how important what you have spoken about is. And as Mr. Marzullo said, this board is committed to assuring that the supports and interventions that you need are going to be provided for you. Okay? So as I get to the curriculum aspect of the meeting, we recently had a very fruitful, informative, and collaborative set of meetings with all of our principals last week. It was a series of meetings, Ms. Dora, Mr. Grasso, and I. Mr. Grasso was able to arrange hour-long meetings with each principal for the curriculum committee, Ms. Dora, myself, to sit with each, each of them to go through a number of items which we felt were important topics to assist them. were important topics to assist them, to be collaborative, to hear them from a different perspective. The purpose of each meeting was to learn more about the instructional processes that are ongoing in each building, how the board could assist and support their needs, both from a programmatic analysis and also from their staffing needs, to reduce some of the challenges that the administration has in facing all of these needs within their particular buildings. There were five main areas that we discussed, and it was very collaborative and very fruitful. I personally learned a great deal in those prospective meetings. The first was to present all the schools with the concept that we as a board look at all of the schools as a unified, as a unified body, not five separate entities. And that everyone working together will get to the same point if we all see the goals and work towards them as one unit. Secondly, we wanted to know how each principal and in their particular building, how they were faring towards one of their main goals, one of the main district goals, was that of differentiated instruction in the classrooms. Differentiated instruction is a very, very important component to addressing all students and all levels in an instructional lesson. How do you deal with those students? And I think that was really some really great conversation around that topic. The third one was that we discussed some of the data that we received from the currently released state performance reports for each school with their principal. The discussion that we had held, dealt with many of the highlights that we saw and also some of the lowlights, but more so in, it was one of these things where we were looking to see how we could support and move the building forward to get to where they were, assuring that we're analyzing the problem areas and creating a plan to move forward. I've been one that has always thought that when you are confronted with problems, success comes from not looking at blame, but working towards solutions. And I think this is one of the things that we were attempting to do. Also, we discussed program and staff needs. What do they see for their buildings? What would they like to see in the future? And then also, we got their perspective on the referendum as it applied to especially the elementary and middle school. So those were the five major areas that we covered in that time period. And just to give you a couple of the highlights from the discussions, at the high school level, as Mr. Bayer had said, we had some very good conversations. And he was very good in really presenting some data to me to illustrate where he is in his building and some of the things that they're doing. And yes, you know, at the previous meeting, there was a misstatement about the number of students that were sitting for the AP examination. And we did correct that, that it is 89% of the students are sitting. We were discussing also our concern about what the perspective was when we were in the high 30s on students that were scoring in the 1 and 2 range. And with an analysis of that data, we able to dissect what the reasons for that were and how that was being addressed. We also discussed the misconception that floated around, the idea that the criteria for the honors and the AP classes was being reduced because it wasn't being as reduced as much as they were presenting some different approaches to scheduling students across levels of courses. And Mr. Bayer did an excellent job of explaining that tonight, so I'm not going to be redundant. But it is important that students in their sequence of courses are in a position to be able to move from one level to another if they are successful in what they're doing and they meet other criteria and not just based on one score and a recommendation. And I thought that that was a good example of how our discussion at the high school level was very beneficial. At the middle school, we discussed and focused on the idea of how we are going to enhance our math program at the middle school and the emphasis that the administration and our curriculum people have in trying to reprogram it so that our goals are a little more lofty in that particular and meet the needs of the students and address some of the shortfalls that we're seeing in our scoring and state performance reports. And I'd like to always emphasize this, is that when you see a proficiency report that may be less than stellar, it isn't always about teaching. It could be programmatic, it could be the wrong curriculum, could be you're not teaching or emphasizing some of the things that are being tested. There's so many variables. What the scores do is it just allows you to begin to look at those things and think about what your particular need is in that area. At North End and South End, the discussions were similar. And really, I can truly understand what both Mr. DiMaggio, Miss Ingles, and a shout out to Ms. Dyer who zoomed in on the meeting. And we discussed, you know, how the facility is compromising their program and how they cannot deliver certain programs that they would like to deliver in their building because they just don't have the capacity or the room to do it. And this was, these were the highlights of our discussions. And I'd like to personally thank each principal for the time that they spent in coming in and elaborating on your positions in this, in these areas. And, you know, we should continue to do that and really get your perspective on different things so that we can be unified in our attempt to help move any of the support items and issues and initiatives that you need. So that's basically it on the curriculum committee. Moving into personnel, I would say that Personnel Committee now is pleased to present several new initiatives and positions that are connected to assisting, enhancing greater efficiency in several areas that remain a focus for us. The board is very concerned, and we've heard it all evening, I don't want to be redundant, as I am, because I live with it as well, with mental health, the well-being of our students, and the intervention services and the support that can be provided. We're attempting to enhance that and streamline it and make it more available to students and to ensure that our counseling services are in a position that they're aligned as well. And we're doing that by adding several new positions, and that's what we can do to assist you. We're establishing a Director of Guidance, Counseling, and Student Support Services. That is a position unto itself. And that will be oversee and coordinate all of our counselors, unify our IRNS groups, the seeds program, along with an oversight of HIB. This will also ensure the appropriate coordination between guidance and special services. Second, next one, we're also going to add an LDTC, a learning consultant to our child study team, which will be able to assist with some of our special needs students in reducing some of the anxiety they have in throughout the learning process. But also, by doing that, we will reduce some of the caseload that our child study team has so that our social workers and our school psychologists can be freed up to be more into the counseling arena. And that is something that we're also concerned about, reducing those caseloads and getting people out there working with the children and not working behind just papers and death. We are also in the position of discussing and hoping to finalize shortly, a supervisor of elementary education, just focusing on elementary education, K to 4, along with our other two supervisors, so that we can now look at our elementary program, work with the curriculum instruction aspects of that program, and allow our other supervisors to focus on the middle schools and the high schools, especially in their areas of subject matter expertise, which some have been working a little bit out of it. And we think by adding this third person, we're going to be able to address some of those lowlights that I was talking about and hopefully see us move in a direction that is a growth model. We're not focusing just on an achievement model, we just like to see growth. And I've spoken about that on several occasions. And finally, we're very happy to announce that Mr. Rosso has secured our first media specialist, okay, which will be approved this evening for the next school year. And we're looking forward towards trying to secure another as we move forward. That position, as I've said many times, is very difficult. It's a secondary certification, which requires an intense internship, and there are just not a lot of those individuals out there. So we are working towards that. There are other agenda items and personnel tonight that are dealing with the normal course of business. Okay, thank you very much, and sorry for taking so much of your time.
No, no need to apologize. So I hope that begins to give you a little bit of an idea of the direction that we would like to, that we are continuing to move into not only, we want, it's about address balance, right? It's about addressing all the areas of needs, right? We hear lots of needs, lots of needs from our students. We heard some needs from our administrators. And we feel confident that this is a direction that we'd like to go and move the district to try to provide the services on all multi-levels. So I'm excited about that. I'm excited to continue to watch our progress develop and continue to, you know, reach the accolades that I know that we are capable of meeting. So thank you, Mr. Palick, for that explanation. And as that whole process unfolds, we will continue to be transparent in our community, in our committee meetings as what that's going to look like. So I think that's it for reports tonight. Oh, Mr. Rosso, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
No problem. I'm going to keep it, I'm, 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 I'm going to keep it just really brief because you all have kind of shared a lot of what I wanted to talk about, but I just want to again, you know, give big kudos to the high school, staff, administration, all those who, it's a big deal, you know, going up to 29, you know, out of 350 schools. So, you know, that is a huge accolade for you all, and you should be celebrated for that. And you are certainly appreciated. You know, I just want to also, I'm not going to repeat a lot of this stuff because I had a lot of this here. You know, I want to give a shout out to Mr. John Bannon and the grounds crew. It's the spring season for sports, and without those individuals and Mr. Bannon's leadership, we would not be having that. So I want to just really thank him and thank the folks that work on the grounds crew because it's a, it's a task getting those fields ready after, you know, rough winters. We didn't have such a rough winter, but it's still rough, you know? So I just wanted to thank them all for that. I also want to thank, just to piggyback on what Ms. Dora, you were saying about the North End and South End art show, I want to give a big shout out to Tracy Farrell. She's new to our district and she has done an absolutely outstanding job with the art show. So both North End and South Ends, and blew my mind between the artistic abilities of our students and the leadership that she provided to our kids. So kudos to her and kudos to all the students, big deal. And also, I just want to just share that, you know, if we could all come out on April 30th for Nikki Storm's Playground dedication, it's a big deal for this community.
11:00 a.m.
11:00 a.m., yep, right on South End. So I won't take up much of your time because you all sit here already, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rosso. Okay, so now to the business. I hope I'm on the right page at this point. Under the Business Administrator's Report, can I please have a motion for G1 through G13?
So moved.
Second.
Discussions. I actually do have a discussion. On G8, I just want to memorialize some donations that came in for the musical, the spring musical, the prom. We had some donations for the stage projector rental, so we really do appreciate that. Mr. Embriano and Mr. Winskowzwick, Winskowzwick.
Yuznaski, maybe?
That's close enough, thank you. But I do want, I know I butchered their names, but I do want to thank them for their donations. And then the North End and South End FSAs, their donation, South End FSA for benches for the Nikki Storm's Playground, and the North End for the courtyard beautification project. So thank you to all the parents that are involved in the FSAs and our FSA boards. We do appreciate all the work that you do. And the other thing I just want to comment on, G13, which, I want to comment on it just because it does tie into the referendum or a potential referendum. So the district has applied for what we call a ROD grant. ROD stands for Regular Operating District. And Mr. DeVita has taken care of that. And that's just for applying for reimbursement for capital improvements. And any type of reimbursement that we can get through these grants is upgrades that essentially will come off any potential referendum. So we appreciate that work because the more we can get done in other, using other avenues, the better off we will be in the long run. And that application is, hopefully, if approved, will go towards HVAC and electrical upgrades at North End and South End. So I appreciate that. So any other discussions on that? If not, roll call, please.
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Palick.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Okay, this one I'd like to do a standalone, a motion for G14, which is a motion to approve the naming of the new South End Playground in honor of Nicholas, also known as Nikki Storms. Any discussion? Roll call, please. A motion?
So moved.
Sorry.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Palick.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Okay. So under Superintendent Report, General Administration, can I have a motion to reject H1, the findings of H1, and accept H2 through H6?
Moved.
Second.
Discussion? I have a discussion, of course. And on H5, which is the updated calendar, I just wanted to make that aware for everyone. The unused snow days have been added. There will be an additional day on Thursday, May 25th, and Tuesday, May 30th. I know I have received a lot of emails of people asking. It's finally official, so I just want to make note of that.
Make your plans.
You had some students dancing.
That's a nice, long weekend. So again, May 5th, Thursday, May 5th, and Tuesday, May 30th. Yes, and then on one of our, under H2, there's a date change in one of the field trips. It's 2I, which is the high school going to Topgolf. It's indicated it's 5:15 and it's being changed to 5:17. So it's just a date change. Okay. Did I get a motion? Can I have a motion?
Moved.
I thought I did that.
Second.
Well, we did the discussion, so roll call, please.
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes, abstain from H2.
Mr. Palick.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes, I'd like to abstain from H1 though.
Mrs. Dora.
Uh, yes, but I need to abstain on H2 to 2D and 2I. Get all that?
Yep.
Okay. Superintendent Report, Human Resources, can I have a motion for I1 through I9? I10 is being administratively pulled for tonight. So a motion for I1 through I9, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I have a couple of discussions. On I7 is referring to, I just want to do some clarification so there is no confusion. It is, it's, I7 is the stipends, those stipends are for our Lego summer build. So I just wanted to make that clear. This is our Lego summer build that we hold in the summer that has grown exponentially. This is our Lego summer build that we hold in the summer that has grown exponentially since last year. So I just wanted to point that out. And also on I10, I want to take this opportunity, these are volunteers, I want to thank the high school students who have volunteered to be instructional leaders for the Lego summer build. So that's just a perfect example of how our older students give back to our younger students. So I wanted to make sure I pointed that out, so thank you for that. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. All right. And under special services, a motion for K1 and K2, please.
Moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Okay, at this point, we're at public comment section of the meeting. I just want to reiterate the rules of public comment, as I spoke earlier. We do have pretty extensive list, so I ask that you, just a reminder, please keep to your three-minute time limit. There is always some room, but it's late, so I'm going to ask you to please be very mindful of that. So we've done some of these. We're going to start off with...
No.
Oh, Rich. They were here, Rich and Angela, I think they left. Mr. Palamara?
Hello, Ms. Dora, how are you? Hello, board.
Good evening. Can you just state your name for the record?
Sure, Michael Palamara, 285 Ridge Road.
Thank you.
So, less than two months ago, there was the proposal to improve and repair our facilities. The proposal was, you know, you received it, it was rejected, which is fine, that's normal, right? I mean, proposals are, are a negotiation, right? And it looked like it needed to be restructured. Have you guys progressed at all as far as improving our facilities?
I like the way you changed your wording. It wasn't rejected, it was, it's being restructured.
Sure.
And we are actively still working on it. Part of that was, as Mr. Pallack spoke earlier, was our meetings with the building-based administrators to get a clearer understanding, the application, the ROD grant, to address some of our electrical needs. So yes, we are actively working on it.
Okay. Do you think we'll have like a timeline on when we might see like a revised proposal?
I don't have a timeline for you right now, but we are working as quickly as we can.
Okay, you know, the only reason I asked for a timeline is, the longer we wait, the greater the cost will increase.
Agree, 100%.
You know, and we have some repairs, and I don't see how we can avoid them, you know, they just have to happen. It's either that or the roofs will start leaking. Okay, so there's that. I would also ask if the board could go on the record as far as supporting social, emotional learning? I think it's important that, that the town get a gauge on, on how important you guys feel that is, or if you don't feel it's important at all.
Well, I think we, I just want to make a comment, I think we have gone on record all evening on our, our stance on mental health and promoting and supporting social, emotional learning.
Well, what I mean specifically is, you know, social, emotional learning as it's defined currently in our school system, right? And as it's understood in New Jersey by those definitions. You know, if you guys can come up with a referendum, either supporting or not supporting it, it would help us out a lot. The last thing is communication, and this is directed more to Mr. Marzullo. Is it possible that we can get more information here on, on the agenda so we have like a better understanding what we're voting on? Specifically, as, as it refers to I1, if we can have more information on, on the resignations, that would be very helpful.
I'm not sure I follow any of that.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure.
I mean, we're looking at...
First of all, the personnel meeting, I did not attend because...
This is about board docs, that's what it is.
Yes.
I'm looking at I1.
So you're talking about the new system that we're using? Is that what you're...
Well, I mean, so, if I'm looking at I1, I'm looking at resignations and retirements, but I have no information onto who resigned and who's retiring. If we can have more information in the documentation, that would help.
Well, it tells you right there, the resignation, if you look at it, 1A, 1B, 1C, it tells you the names.
I'm not seeing it in the, in the printout they, they gave up there, not here.
Do we have different printouts, Mr. DeVita?
Yeah.
What's out there is the, the summary sheets?
Okay, so it's available online?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, then, then what do you call, did I take that up?
When you go online, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Sure.
There's two icons. One shows like a brief agenda, and then up on the top, there's toggles.
Okay.
Go to the one that says, I think it's detailed, I think it's called, detailed agenda, and that's where you'll find the details.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that a lot.
You're very welcome.
Have a nice night.
You too, thank you. Now that makes sense. All right. Mr. Tedesco? You read my mind. I appreciate that.
I almost forget how to stand after three hours there. Okay. Good evening, I am Mike Tedesco, 90 Rugby Road, and I teach computer science here at the high school. So earlier today at our general membership meeting, the members of the Cedar Grove Education Association formally voted for me to be the president-elect of the union. As I prepare to move into...
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. As I prepare to move into the role as president of this local, I want to acknowledge and give a huge thank you to Chris Cannella for his 18 years of service in this role. I don't know if I can last 18 years, we'll see. I am honored by the appointment, and I look forward to continuing the drive of building a positive future for our staff and students. Before I really begin, I had to like jot all this down because I was just totally moved by what happened with the students here tonight. I just want to say how grateful I am to the students that raise concerns about their mental health. I commend them for their bravery and their candor, and their willingness to speak and share their experiences speaks volumes to their courage and strength. I'm here tonight also because I want to take a moment to recognize the hard work and dedication of our staff and students of the high school. Thanks to their efforts, Cedar Grove High School has recently risen significantly in the state rankings, putting the school at 29 out of 350 schools. That's a jump of 50 for us. That's a testament to the incredible commitment of the educators and the passion of our students. I'm incredibly proud of the work that has been done to achieve this success. I know how hard they all worked to make it happen, especially given that this was done in our first full year back with no restrictions post-pandemic. This success is a reflection of their incredible dedication to our students and their commitment to academic excellence. And at the same time, I also want to acknowledge the hard work of our teachers at the middle school, North End and South End elementary schools. We have an incredible and talented group of educators who work tirelessly to ensure that our students receive the best possible education.
Time's up.
That's it? That's the new, this is the new timer, huh? Wow. The success, where am I? I am proud of the work that they do every day and the contributions they make to the success of our district. Our district continues to be a beacon of hope and opportunity for our students, and I hope and I look forward to working with the administration and the Board of Education to continue this positive momentum. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and please know, as always, the Cedar Grove Education Association remains committed to supporting our students and staff in every way possible. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Tedesco. And again, I thank you for stepping up and taking over this role, and I also would like to thank Mr. Cannella for all the time and effort that he has put in. 18 years is a long time, so. Okay, next we have Mr. Martinelli.
John Martinelli, 30 Hillside Avenue. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Going back to last Board of Ed meeting, March 14th, I brought up an issue about how now, you know, boys are allowed in girls bathrooms. So what happened was, I think I came up with a pretty decent solution or request that in order to, you know, to ensure, and we don't have a situation, or a potential situation like we had in the aftercare last year, that we have a monitor there. So what I did was, the day after the meeting on March 15th, I called up Mr. Decourt, who is the principal, as you know, at middle school, and I passed it by him, and he said that's actually a pretty good idea. So he said he would have a conversation with Mr. Rosso and the rest of the board members. So, but I mean, I remember at that meeting that we said that you would have to adhere to state mandates. The thing is, though, the state mandates, you accept money, like how does that work as far as, in other words, for them to, you know, to instill what they feel that we should do? How does that go about? I think it was like $271,000? Correct me if I'm wrong with that.
I can't speak to the exact number, so...
271,000 was our stated increase. There are state mandates that are out there, that the state has every right to pass something and then put it on to the district, and then it's district's responsibility to find the funds to follow that mandate.
Right, now who, who actually applies for, like, how does that work? In other words, to avoid what I feel is a necessary thing, like having boys going into girls bathrooms, to avoid that, if we didn't take those monies, we would have, we could, you know, pretty much do what we feel is right, is that correct?
No.
No?
That is not correct.
No, I'm just asking, that's why I'm asking for my, you know, my, my own self.
No, that is, that is not correct.
Okay, well, I left last time requesting that a monitor be put into the, a female monitor be put into, to the girls bathroom, and you said that you would look at it, but as of now, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't, I don't see that happening.
I can't speak to what's happening in the, in the buildings, and certainly Mr. Rosso can, but yes, we did say we would discuss it, and we had a conversation, and we threw around a couple of different ideas on how to address the concern. And so maybe you can, Mr. Rosso, you can speak to where we're at with that and what is actually, if anything, is occurring?
Yeah, we definitely had a conversation. We definitely had a conversation about your suggestion. Mr. Decourt and I had a conversation, and we looked at what, we looked at the law, we looked at what was realistic financially and being fiscally responsible, as well as other, other ideas. I believe at the last meeting, you talked about an all-gender bathroom as well, and we talked about it with our architect. It does require renovation. It is currently being done here at the high school. We were very fortunate to have a space that was pretty much packaged already to be able to accommodate students. At the high school, it's a little bit different. We looked at the cost-effectiveness of doing that and what would be the easiest, quickest solution to do that, but also be what is fiscally responsible. So we are still in conversations with our architect, and we also have to look at the fact that when you do a major renovation on a bathroom, it does require the following of a lot of different codes. So we are in conversation right now with our architect as to what would be the best area in the middle school to accommodate students. I will definitely be able to share more with you as I get more information. This is not something that can be done quickly overnight because it does take some, some major renovation to do that to particular areas of the building.
No, I agree, I agree what you're saying. The thing is, though, in the interim, why not have a female monitor in the bathroom? In the interim, I'm just saying, until we get up to that speed. Because there's a lot of girls, right, including my daughter, that are apprehensive to go to the bathroom because they see that, you know, boys are coming into the bathroom, and I don't understand, like, you know, that could be a mental issue too, right? Girls are apprehensive. There's a lot of parents that I know, I know a lot, I know a lot of people in town, and a lot of them are upset at the fact that, you know, there are boys in there and their daughters, you know, it says girls bathroom, their daughters are apprehensive going to the bathroom. And I don't want to talk personal stuff, but it actually affected my daughter, and she's only 10 years old. So, you know, I don't know where we're going to go with this, but like you say, you're trying to make a change. The thing is, though, all I'm asking is for an interim to make, I guess, the girls that feel a little apprehensive, I guess, since there's a female monitor there, to make, you know, more, you know, friendly for them. Because I feel their rights are being stripped, to be totally honest with you. I mean, like I say, for all this equality, inclusion, I'm a little old-fashioned, but I don't think I'm old-fashioned in respect to this. I mean, it says girls bathroom, and I still, you know, trying to wrap my head around how, you know, boys are allowed in the girls bathroom. Whether it's mandated, whatever, I'm just talking from a father's perspective, and there's a lot of fathers like me that are very upset. I could tell you that for a fact. And, you know, like, you know...
Thank you, Mr. Martinelli. We, we hear you, and we're going to consider to take, continue to take it into consideration.
But Ms. Dora, how long is that going to take before we put a female monitor in? That's all I'm asking.
That's a conversation that I have to have, that the board will have to have with the, Mr. Rosso and the administration.
All right, it's just a shame that, you know, we talk about mental issues like these poor kids are going through, you know? Believe me, that has a mental impact on a lot of girls, and girls that are very young.
We hear you, we hear you.
Okay. And that may attribute to some of that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mrs. Casili?
Hi, Lisa Casili, 12 Dogwood Court. I just want to thank the board for being very progressive and forward-thinking in considering a director of school counseling. That's actually the new term, it's not guidance anymore at school counseling because we all know that school counselors really do take on all of the issues that our students face. It's not just about college applications or letters of recommendation. They are truly handling all of the issues that our students face, and we need someone to take charge of that. In addition, we of course need an LDTC. We have a rise in special education students that need services. If we can't get those students seen, tested, and managed by a competent case manager, we're at another disadvantage here. It's not just about AP, it's also about kids who need additional services. And I also want to give a shout out to our SAC, Mrs. LaFoon, who's here tonight. As we all know, that's the role that I had for 25 years, and I think that we are not giving credit where credit is due because a SAC is in a school district to manage the mental health and wellness, substance abuse, and other issues that arise for students. And we have approximately 400 students in this building. I'm sure Mrs. LaFoon can manage those students very well, and I'm sure she does so. So I don't want to miss the opportunity to give her a shout out. I think the title is often unknown to people. It's basically a crisis counselor and a mental health service provider within a school district, and we have one here, and we've had one for years. We sat on roundtable together for many years, and I know the work that she does, so I don't want her job to go unnoticed here. We do have a mental health provider in the district, and she's also equipped to handle HIB and everything else because that's what SACs do. So I just wanted to say that and thank the board, and let you know that we do appreciate all of your efforts in what you're doing for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Casili. Mrs. Mariella? Two for two tonight. Okay, the next one, I'm not really sure what this says.
Statement by Nicole Pash. Sorry, my eyes are bad.
Anybody here?
She left.
No, she left. Okay. Or he left, I'm not really sure. Mrs. DeChara, you're up.
Nicole DeChara, 21 Ring Place. First, I want to commend our students. I was taken aback. You spoke so eloquently, better than I think any of us could ever talk about. Thank you. Wonderful. I'm so proud of you all. I do have a question, and I'm just learning about the new board docs, and I see that there's details behind every bullet item to this that's online. there's details behind every bullet item to this that's online. So, I'm, when I signed up, I didn't know which line item was for the budget. Here's my question, and it's about mental health. Was the mental health director position eliminated tonight? And if so, where was that?
Two things. One, we don't have a director of mental health, so therefore, nobody can be eliminated because we don't have a director of mental health, and we did not speak about that tonight. So, no, it is not on the-
Okay.
It's a personnel issue.
It's a personnel issue. Did we eliminate any positions tonight in the budget? Was there any position eliminated?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not one position?
No.
Okay, so, I have to go back. Mr. Pelleck-
Budget doesn't eliminate.
Thank you.
Budget doesn't eliminate.
A position.
A position.
The board would have to vote to eliminate a position.
Right.
Budget doesn't do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is, is there a position that's being reframed and renamed?
Right now, what we reported today is that we are talking about bringing in a director of school counseling.
Great. I love it.
An LDTC. What else did you have in your presentation, Mr.?
ABA teacher.
An ABA teacher. These are positions that are now, that are being added to the budget, and a supervisor of curriculum.
Elementary.
Elementary education. Thank you. Pre-K to 4.
Okay.
So, those are the, the new positions.
So, the new position, the director of school counseling, we already have somebody in that position, so we're going to be looking to hire somebody for the LDTC, the ABA, and the supervisor. So, we're going to be hiring 1, 2, 3 positions, correct? Are we going to dance in circles?
We're not dancing. We're not dancing about anything. We presented tonight where the direction that we see that our district going with staffing. I cannot speak about personnel, specific personnel, which is what you would like me to speak to, but I cannot. Okay, so, the rest of the information that you're looking will come out in due time as we put together our, the direction that we want to go.
It's, it's for people who ran on the platform of transparency-
Thank you, Mrs. DeChara.
I find this very difficult to swallow.
Thank you.
I do.
If you have any specific questions-
I do have one more question.
Last one, please.
Ms. Dora. Oh, I hope you're not trying to silence my opinion.
Can you just, please ask your question?
I hope you're not.
I'd love to answer it.
I really hope you're not. Were all of these changes based upon the recommendation of our school administrators?
Thank you for your comment.
You're not going to answer?
It's personnel.
I'm not naming anybody? I am not naming anybody.
So.
I'm not naming anybody. Ms. Dora, were all of the changes made based on the recommendation of our-
They were part of the discussion. Recommendations, it's not one person making any decisions. We are a board. We are a team. This board works collaboratively with the administrators, not just the superintendent, not just the business administrator, all the super, all the building-
So, your answer is yes, then? So, it was then based on the recommendations of our district administrators? Yes or no?
As a whole in the board, yes.
All of the administrators?
It, no, not all.
It's not the board's decision. It's not the board's decision to hire, fire, make new positions.
It's the superintendent's decision.
Okay, so, so, everybody's on board on this? This was recommended?
Well, I guess as it will find out.
Will find out.
Okay, thank you. Time is up.
One more question.
Time is up, Mrs. DeChara.
I'd like to know, I think other people would like to know. I think we have some great information. Please don't, please don't-
Time is up.
Please don't stifle my, my time to speak.
We're ending this portion. Is there anybody else that would like to speak tonight?
I'm, I'm not going anywhere. I have one more question.
Anybody else? Mrs. DeChara, please, have a seat.
I'm being respectful. I'm following everything that you've asked me to do.
Mr. Young?
When will the renew, when is the high school principal's contract going to be renewed? When is that up?
We're not discussing personnel, like you're asking. If you, if you don't sit down-
I'm not asking a name.
You're asking about when the principal's contract was going to be renewed. You're absolutely asking about-
That's not public information?
He gets renewed in accordance, by May 15th, all non-tenured administrators and certificated staff members-
That's what I was asking. Thank you.
Must be advised as to whether or not they're being re-employed.
Okay, and is that voted on by the board?
Correct.
Okay. When will that be on the agenda, and it will, it, will it be tucked away, or will it be written, "High school principals, renewal"?
Everybody who is being recommended for renewal appears on the printed agenda because the board has to vote on it. So, yes, it will not be hidden away, it'll be on the printed agenda.
Perfect. Everybody, and that will be in May. When's May's meeting?
May 9th.
May 9th. So, that's when it will be voted on.
7:30.
7:30. Thank you.
Mr. Young?
Hi, I didn't sign up because I was late coming to the meeting. Steve Young, 18 Young Avenue, Cedar Grove.
You can just take it off.
Whoa, look at that. I'm here with AB Canfield Ryben. We are members of the Cedar Grove Historical Society Board of Trustees. Contrary to all popular belief, the farm is going to operate this year, and the market's going to operate this year. We have five dedicated volunteers there now, and three or four weeks ago, I reached out to the Cedar Grove High School principal, and I had a meeting there, that we would like to bring in Cedar Grove High School students to work the farm. And we have a program in place to, if they qualify, we haven't done the framework yet for scholarships. And I met on-site about two or three weeks ago with Heather Donnelly, one of the advisors, and five of the special ed students. And we are dedicated, we'd love to have them work for us, but I was told that the board has to approve them working there. And they will not handle any power tools, we do not use herbicides or pesticides, they will be furnished safe, safety equipment and how to use it. And we'd like to get them on-board, and I was told that the board has to approve them working there. So, that's what I'm here for. Amy and I are here. And by the way, our families have over 450 years of farming experience in Cedar Grove. 450, that's a zero on the four and five.
Yes, we were actually speaking about the-
Her family moved here in 1690, my family moved here in 1880.
We were actually speaking about the farm and the students participating. Mrs. Keegan was mentioning it from the town council before you came in. So, earlier this evening, we were talking about.
Great.
So, as far as the board approving, a resolution just needs to be presented to us, so that can either be done-
So, in other words, they can't start there. I'd like to get them there because time's a-wastin', the plants need loving care.
We need a resolution. So, if the building principal or Miss Pignatello, I'm sure she would, you know, somebody wants to present the board.
She did send, somebody to look at, so it is-
Okay, so, it's in the works. There you go.
It's in the works.
It's in the works.
So, I'm not going to see any, any new people to, to work Monday, because she said, the kids love to do it, they want to come, I think she said, Mondays and Fridays from like 12 to 2.
I don't think Monday.
No, Mondays and Wednesdays, 12 to 2.
I don't think Monday.
Oh.
We can't work that fast, but-
Okay.
We do have a, a meeting coming up in two weeks, so.
Okay, so, May 9th?
Yep.
So, the resolution will be there.
I hope so.
Oh.
I'll look for it.
So do the plants.
Thank you. Thank you for what, thank you for all you're doing.
Okay, we'd love to have the kids there, and this is open to any of the high school kids, kids who want to work there. They're going to, you know, we have a framework for scholarships, college scholarships, open to all the students, including the special ed students. Okay? Thank you for your time. Thanks, Steve.
You're the microphone. Okay.
Hi, Marlena Cotter, 18 Woodstone Drive. Sorry I was late, I didn't get to sign up.
That's okay.
The pilot money, I'm curious if we're doing anything special with it, or if it's just being tossed into the budget, into the general fund. It seems like a huge opportunity to do something great with that money, and I was just curious if it's being earmarked for anything in particular.
It's the 1.2 million, it's a part of the, the revenue is part of the, the budget, so it's not like set aside for, for certain things. We did, the first year that, we got it. This year, we were able to buy three school buses for that there, but now, the, we did have a loss in revenue of, from not having the rental of the bottom of LRP, so some of that money went towards, towards that loss of revenue, but now the money is, is infused into the, part of the budget as a revenue.
Got it. And is that a one-time payment? There's no more pilot money? That's just the 1.2, and that's it?
It's every year.
It's every year.
Every year. So, every year, we'll have a new opportunity to-
Correct.
To earmark it for something.
So, I was just going to add to Mr. DeVito's, that for the upcoming school year, it is infused in the budget, as he just spoke of, but that doesn't mean that that's what it will look like every year.
Got it.
For 25 years.
Got it.
Yes.
That's great. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Okay, I think that's it, and we're going to close that portion of the meeting. Announcement of future meetings, as we know, the next meeting is May 9th, and it is at-
North End.
North End, same time, 6:30 for closed session, 7:30 for regular session, and the following meeting after that is June 20th, and that will be at South End. So, kind of all in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.